Welcome, everyone. Final meeting of the term, October fourteenth it is at five thirty-two P M. All the meeting to order? Yeah. Too far underway? C O Gaudi. Stand you have some something you'd like to say?
Yes, thank you. Well, I wanted to start by acknowledging. Been done last term and. Sure. Come, I wish. Wanted to acknowledge that tonight, just the last. In decade. Here. In time during that time, we've. Kids graduate, had kids. Age now, and there's the lots of life events and it's. Just to walk.
Decided an opportunity to review agendas. Respect for the consent agenda. Are there any items to be considered for removal? Seeing none, but you know unanimous consent. Wow, Counselor Hookstra.
I've been tasked to do this, Mayor Creasy, but anyhow, I'll move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please proceed to vote. That is unanimously in favor. For the regular agenda. Any items there? Counselor Hookstra.
Thanks, Mayor Creasy. Could I add an in-camera land item, please?
It'll be item eight point five then. Counselor Gullickson.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. I'll move the regular agenda as present or as amended.
Thank you. Just one last call. Anyone have anything else? Very good. Go ahead and vote. Was awfully quick, but I believe that was unanimous. It is in favor. Thanks, everyone. Mr. Tomnick and his I T team are getting so good at interpreting what we're going to come up with for. Oceans they come up awfully quick on our tabulators here. The first item up under section six. Request for decision is item six point one, which is by law three eighty-one point two. Our business bylaw amendment for first and possibly second reading. Director Piché.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy, and good evening, Council. This evening, administration is proposing an amendment to the business license bylaw for first and second reading. The City of La Combe's Business License bylaw three eighty-one sets the framework for license licensing businesses operating within the municipality. As our community grows and becomes diversified, administration has identified opportunities to modernize the bylaw to better support event organizers. Markets and businesses that operate only part of the year. The proposed amending bylaw three eighty-one point two includes updates to language, improved consistency throughout and some minor grammatical. Corrections to clarify some of the some of the clauses. An update also is being proposed to the fee schedule and the penalties. Some of the current challenges that are being found these days is that every every market. Special events or festival coordinator or organizer. Struggle with getting all their businesses that they're hiring on into the into their their events with business licenses. There's also seasonal businesses that come into town that have concerns of having to pay a full year's license. To address these these challenges, administration is proposing making two recommendations. Recommending two new categories to the business license bylaw. One is the multi-vendor business license and the other is a seasonal business license. A multi-vendor business license would allow an organizer or operator or property owner to hold a single license that will cover multiple vendors. Or related businesses at a specific event location or during certain dates. This approach is ideal for farmers markets, cultural festivals, or other community events where many vendors come. Are brought together under one organization or one organizer. For example, a farmer's market could obtain one multi-vendor license and that would cover all the vendors within that market. Or a festival organizer could include all their food trucks, their artisan booths and amusement activities under one license. Currently. Currently, the La Combe Farmers Market vendors are exempt from requiring a business license in in the current bylaw. But right now, other markets are not exempt from that that privilege. The amendment proposes to extending that courtesy to all of the other markets within the city for fairness and consistency. Administration has consulted with some of the community groups and event organizers to understand their needs. And the feedback has showed that there's strong support for a more flexible and streamlined process. Especially from the volunteer organizers who face administrative challenges managing dozens of short-term vendors. This new model simplifies compliance, reduces paperwork and provides a single point of accountability for the city. It also helps avoid situations where vendors unintentionally operate without a license. Become frustrated after enforcement action and then decide not to return for future in future years. The seasonal business license being proposed is designated for operations that run less than six months each year. And this can include landscapers, produce stands, then mobile vendors and holiday businesses such as Christmas tree lots. The seasonal licenses allow businesses to align their fees with their actual operating period. While maintaining some safety and compliance standards. Some of the other key changes. In the in the business license bylaw is under section five clause ten where it just clarifies some of the language. Because it it needs to state that new businesses starting after July first will pay only fifty percent of the annual fee. And it only applies to new operations, not businesses starting after July first. Sections ten and eleven are updated to include an actual penalty. It references it, but it did not state what those penalties were in the past. And then we also have some key changes to the fee schedule, schedule A. And it has been updated for the first time since twenty thirteen with some proposed rates and mainly due to. Removing of the Economic Development Officer surcharge. We have also proposed penalty schedule, schedule B, to include second and third offenses allowing for escalating penalties if there's repeated. Repeat violations. When we were reviewing the the fees and to be able to remain competitive, we looked at both. All of our municipal comparators to where their fees are set and whether they have an economic development surcharge. All of our municipal comparators, except for ourselves and Black Falls, do not have an economic development surcharge. It's just a flat rate structure. That when we also proposed looking at what the C P I is, that would increase the rates quite considerably. And that's shown in the schedule on or on the table in one of the art in our F D. So to summarize, we're recommending to modernize the business license bylaw. By improving the flexibility for seasonal and event-based businesses and enhancing some administrative clarity. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Director Piché. Counselor Gullickson.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. In regards to the multi-vendor business license, like for the farmer's market. It's a hundred dollars. It says here, right, will be the fee. Is that would that be weekly for them though? For the whole season?
That would be for the whole season, yes.
Because that would be their designated timeframe then?
That's correct.
Good. And but somebody else who ran one for four or five days, it would still pay the hundred dollars.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dallas.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. Yeah, I my similar question around this multi-vendor license and so is. Apologies, I'm trying to trying to figure out the words, but the farmer's market is an example, La Combe Days is an example. Say La Combe Days wanted to host a second market outside of the La Combe Days time. Would that license still apply for them to operate that or would it be a different event now? So they are required to purchase the license for that event? I guess that's just my I'm looking for clarity about if one individual is buying this license and then transferring it to every market they operate. Or if it will be specified to certain markets operated.
So just to clarify the question, so for La Combe Days, they only operate within July, one weekend within July. And and so I would assume that that would be the only time that they would be looking for a business license for that one festival. For a farmer's market, it wouldn't be every week that they would be looking for 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 individual licenses. We would we would classify it as a specific date or a set of dates and a specific location. And they would have to provide the number of vendors or the the maximum number of vendors that they would cover within that. And we would only have the one fee for that what that season, basically.
Sure. Do you mind if I continue? Yeah, no, I appreciate that clarification helps. And so the reason I ask is just, I think there's a few different. Operators that that would be able to provide the similar service, but they may do it for multiple organizations in the community. And so that was. My question is whether they buy one for this one and it's as long as it's attached to that that event or if it's attached to that. That operator's name. So when they say they operate a Christmas market, but it's the same person that operates a market at La Combe Days. Do do they have to buy a separate license? And so that's kind of what the yeah, the idea was. Thank you.
May you thank you. So in that regard, if you're looking at different seasons, you would end up looking at your your dates that you're you're defining for the your one market. So for the summer market, you would be defining likely out at Mitchener Park for. May to October, say, and it'll be every Tuesday or whenever the market is. If there's a Christmas market at a different location, that would be a different license at that point. So it'd be at the L M C. So. Within the license, they would have to define what the what the timing and the location and the number of vendors that they have to that they have participating in their market would be.
On that item, I get just a little clarification. I'm not totally sold on this idea. I'm not that it shouldn't be perhaps. An annual license for those multi-vendor ones is is it really worth? Is it really worth to the all's time and effort? To go through. I mean, it's all the same information for the owner or whatnot. If they have ten vendors at one event and fifteen at another at a different date. I I'm not sure that there's been a tremendous amount more effort go into it. I'm just wondering if perhaps an annual fee for multi-vendors wouldn't be more appropriate. I I guess I'm just not sure what it is, what we're trying to glean from having that information on specific. Dates and numbers of vendors for seasonal events.
So so for the the dates and the times, that would be the time that would allow. Say enforcement services to be able to verify that. Those vendors are operating and they're within the confines of the location that. The the market organizer or the the festival organizer is within. The thing is, is that then enforcement services wouldn't be focused on what's happening with those vendors at that time in that location. They'd be more focused on things outside of that that time and location. Say, let's use La Combe Days as an example. So if La Combe Days is going to operate around. The arena, the L M C and Mitchener Park. Will our administration will know where those events are happening and won't really worry about the vendors that are located in those areas. But say somebody comes into the city and is just trying to get. Some excess business from the festival or the markets and such. And they're out at another location on the east side of the tracks or the mall or someplace like that. Then enforcement services can ensure that they're covered under a separate business license because they're not part of. The La Combe Days Festival in that sense. So that that's one of the reasons for that. We're not asking to know all the names and the information about every vendor. We'd like the organizers to be able to keep track of that so that they 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 know who's on onsite. If we have a question about somebody or somebody has concerns of something, we can then contact the organizer. And work through them to have have any issues dealt with at that time. Does that does that help?
Thank you. Counselor Hibbs.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. I really appreciate the effort put into these changes because I think that is a really good example of listening to vendors that have come with concerns and I think this. Very much addresses that. Just two questions. You know, we're talking about having these business licenses. Do we ever see actual enforcement of this? Like, I do realize that if somebody's on record that we have had business licenses from them before, we follow up with them when we don't have a renewal. But do we ever actually have enforcement show up and challenge, whether it's a food truck or go into a business? I'm just curious. Like what the whole point of this is?
Thank you for that question. In the past, we have had enforcement services go and. Challenge or question various mobile vendors. There's a specific. Layout that has to happen with having C A O approval for various locations and such. And if if we're not aware of them being in those areas or of them being in those areas without that authorization. They are questioned and there are they have to show a business license. We did have a situation a couple of years ago through La Combe Days where a lot of vendors showed up. And our enforcement services did go in. And then, of course, there is some. Negative feedback, I guess, of the sense that they were not going to come back at a future event because they did have. They're saying we're only here for a few days. We're not we're not here all year or anything like that. This is a lot of red tape for no reason. And so we're working with the the organizers to find out how can we make this easier and how can we make this better? So. And this is what came out of that.
Thank you. That that's good to hear because obviously we don't want to discourage, you know, business coming to town, but we also don't want to penalize the ones that are following the rules. So it definitely needs to be fair. My only other question then is to do with the fee schedule. I'm finding it a little bit difficult to understand that we typically try to strive for the median work. I like to joke that we try to be mediocre, which of course we're not trying to be, but but in this case, with the exception of, I think, one fee. We're always over the median and by quite a bit in some cases. So I'm just wondering as to the rationale as to why. Our fees are just that much more than our comparators. Whereas in other things, when we set rates, we generally want to be very close to our median competitors. So if you have any. Explanation for that, that would be that would be fabulous.
Um, I don't have any explanation about why we're not at the median, just more around when we were looking at the rates we haven't. We aren't proposing a lot of change. The rates that were there for them, what they currently were. Were with an E D O surcharge and we kind of just rolled them up together, the the rate that we had, which would have been. Near to the municipal comparator if you were to remove. The E D O surcharge, but we we just added that in as a flat charge to and then just sort of rounded up to the nearest. Zero or five dollar in that regard. There there definitely isn't any any real. Prime of reason as to why we we didn't go with it, but we just wanted to keep things as close and as consistent as we could at this time.
Counselor Gullickson.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. I'd like to make the motion that council gives first reading for bylaw. Three eight one point two, the business license bylaw amendment as presented.
Thank you. No one else? Please go ahead and vote. That is in favor unanimously. Do you have any appetite for a second reading or not? Counselor Dallas.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. I guess before I read this, I just noticed that. There's no B motions. Is that just a clerical typing error?
Coordinator Bella Bono, go ahead.
Thank you. I do apologize, Council. Upon reviewing the potential motions, we had revised them. So they should be one A B, two A B C, and three A B C.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't misreading one or so. Okay, thank you. I'll make the motion that council gives second reading of bylaw three eighty-one point two, the business license bylaw amendment as presented.
Thank you. C O Gaudi.
I just wanted to provide a little bit extra to the response that Director Piché had given to your question. We have followed often the median of other comparators. We've also set things like recreation facility rates based on just inflation, accounting for inflation. And so here, when we looked at those two approaches, they actually come because the city's. Fees must have been starting, but a bit higher than median, obviously. They came to to quite a bit different numbers, whether you use the median or you apply apply inflation. And so our recommended numbers, I actually can't find them in my book. I apologize. But there, if I remember, right between our recommended ones are between the philosophy of median and the philosophy of. Of C P I to target the middle, but obviously we would be happy with any of them.
Don't see any lights on, so please proceed to vote. That is unanimously accepted as well. Acting Director Mitchell, next. Item six point two, the interpretive signage location.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy, and good evening, Council. This evening, Council is being asked to confirm the installation and location of the interpretive sign accompanying the Eyes of Wisdom mural. On the south side of City Hall. On July fourteen, twenty twenty-five, Council approved the recommendation from the La Combe Arts Collection Committee. To install the mural on the exterior south wall of Council chambers. At that time, the interpretive signage was not part of the materials reviewed or approved by Council. The Art Collection Committee typically confirms the location of signage with the owners prior to installation. As Council represents ownership of this building and because the signage was not originally part of the approved scope. Administration is now seeking Council's approval of the location of the interpretive sign. The mural and sign were unveiled on September twenty-three, twenty twenty-five in a public ceremony attended by the artists and local elders. As well as several members of the community. A letter from Dr. Laurel Holliday, Chair of the La Combe Arts Collection Committee, was received on September twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. In her letter, Dr. Holliday emphasizes the interpretive signs importance as an integral part of the mural. Stating that it provides critical context about the artist's intent and the indigenous heritage it represents. She respectfully requests that Council retain the interpretive sign in its current location. She respectfully requests that council retain the interpretive sign in its current location and form to preserve the educational and cultural integrity of the mural. Administration is presenting council with three options tonight for review and consideration. Option one, retain it, the interpretive sign in the current location. Option two, relocate the sign inside City Hall. Or option three, remove the sign from the wall and install it on a post in the parking lot. Administration supports recommends supporting option one, retaining the interpretive sign in its current location beside the mural as the most straightforward solution. This approach reflects the artist's and committee's intent, requires no additional costs, and maintains the site as it has already been presented and celebrated by the community. I'm happy to take any questions.
Counselor Conick.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. I'll go ahead and make that motion that council endorsed the installation of an interpret sign in its current location on the south side of City Hall beside the Eyes of the Wisdom mural. Yeah, I really liked this here. I was here earlier today and I took the time to read it and there's a lot of good information there. I know I've had a few people in the community ask about the mural. And like, what what was the inspiration behind it? What was the, what's the meaning behind it? That type of thing. And I think this is, this gives a lot of great information. And people won't be asking that question anymore because they can just see the signage that's right there. So I I think it's terrific. I, yeah, I'm glad that it's there. Thank you.
Counselor Golekson.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. Quick question regarding the signage. Are we, is this something we're going to do in the future with future murals? So that we have that information on all of them?
Thank you for that question. I'm not super familiar with the Art Collection Committee, to be honest. I do know that the museum does do walking tours downtown. That speaks about the murals and some of them do have placards next to them, but not all of them. It could certainly be a recommendation that could be brought forward to the Art Collection Committee in future.
Counselor Hibbs.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. I could actually expand on that answer. So I would say that the Art Collection Committee in the past potentially has not put plaques or whatever with the public installations prior. But that is the commitment of the committee at this time is as installations go in that they have explaining plaques, at least to recognize the artist. And in some cases, like the instance here, to explain what the meaning behind something might be. Because obviously, that's not always going to be the case, but that is a commitment that is being made by the committee. Just recently, we have some more recent art installations that we just finalized plaques for as well. So that is the expectation going forward is that there should be proper plaques that go with art installations.
So I think we need to be clear in this because this is not a plaque. This is a four foot wide by thirty inch high sign. I think it's extremely inappropriate the way this has come about. This has become more of a political statement than it is information about an artist. And I, I couldn't care less who's, what the heritage is, that's irrelevant. This is an outside committee making decisions on behalf of council and it's very wrong. I would like to see it removed from from City Hall. The sooner the better and put up in a, in a, another location more appropriate. Counselor Huxtra.
Thanks, Mayor Creasy. I have not spoken with mayor about this, but that would have been my, my statement about this as well. I I think it's great to recognize the artist, absolutely. There's one paragraph on there that talks about his imagery. I accept that too, but I too do not accept, I, walking up tonight too, I thought that is not a plaque. That is another, almost another thing here. So I like the idea that it would be in City Hall, but that there would just be a plaque for the artist. And so, yeah, I'm sorry, I won't support this motion.
I guess the other thing I would like to add, it's just unfortunate this came about the way that did. This was not an oversight. This is a purposeful thing. You don't accidentally order a four foot wide sign and forget to tell anybody about it. We've went over this type of scenario many times with the public and we berate them for for not asking permission, but better to beg for forgiveness later. And then our own people do this, it's very unacceptable. Counselor Hibbs.
With all due respect, that is a completely erroneous statement that the committee always anticipated having an explaining plaque to go with it. And that it is not a political statement. It is in fact art and anybody who says otherwise is making it a statement which it is not. And that is all I have to say about it.
Very good. Anyone else? Please go ahead and vote. And by a margin of four to three, that motion is to endorse the installation of the interpretative sign is passed. Counselors Huxtra, Golekson, and myself voting no on that item. Item six point three. CEO Gaudi, the bylaw three seventy point six, council procedural by law amendment proposed for first and possibly second reading this evening. Yes, thank you, Mayor Creasy. Much like our earlier bylaw, the business by law amendment, we are recommending first and second just because of the unique timing. We wanted to make sure that council had an opportunity both before and after the election to weigh in on these two bylaws. So tonight, we are recommending two amendments, or sorry, two readings of the procedural bylaw. There's three main components that we've updated. The first is to remove references to a code of conduct with the province, removing those requirements and actually disallowing code of conduct type references within procedural bylaws. They are no longer valid, and so we're recommending their removal. The second is to address the situation where existing committee members run for and are successful in suing municipal office, local office. So there are situations where you might have a member of a committee, of a city committee who's there as a public member, but then they get elected on to council. And it has been a point of some confusion before, so we're trying to clarify that here. That essentially saying, with the way it's written, your appointment as a public member ceases to be valid once you are elected to local office. And you certainly can be appointed as the council representative through the organizational meeting. But you would not be carrying those dual roles. You wouldn't be in a situation where you're been brought on as a public member, but then are continuing, continuing to act once you're elected. It would be a sort of like a break in service and you'd either not be appointed as a public member or you would be, or sorry, you'd be removed as a public member and you would either be appointed as a council member or no longer on the committee. And the third are some clerical changes largely about the access to information and freedom of protection of personal information and privacy versus former references to the Freedom of Information and Privacy Act or FOIP. We are recommending two readings this evening with third reading then taking place with the new council, which will provide clarity to appointments to the committees and boards post organizational meeting. Counselor Golekson.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. This is quite timely with MPC. I think everybody on there is running for council, so it could be a problem there somewhere along the line. Yeah, so I'll, I'll make the motion that council give first reading to the procedure bylaw amended, amendment bylaw three seventy point six as presented.
Thank you. Counselor Dallas.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. Yeah, I, I appreciate all of these, the the adjustment to the code of conduct. This is a great example of what did people not ask for? Let's give them that. So thank you to the provincial government. And then the wording around our, our members of boards. I've ran into a couple of meetings now. We're just closing out your last meetings. And this has come up several times and we just, you know, made recommendations. So it's nice that there, there will be a firm thing in place for this. So thank you. And just thank you for all the updates and changes to make, to make these better. I appreciate it.
Listen, thank you. Any other comments? Of course, this is not really on the floor for debate yet. I didn't do clarification or anything, no. Please go ahead and vote. And that is passed unanimously. Counselor Dallas.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. The motion that council gives second reading to procedure bylaw amendment, bylaw three seventy point six as presented.
Anyone, any final comments or questions? Please proceed to vote. And that is passed unanimously as well. Of course, we'd have the five in camera items. Before we get to those, I'll just read out the next meeting, which is the organizational meeting post-election on Monday, November the third here at five thirty PM. And then a committee of the whole meeting to follow the organizational meeting. With that in mind, Counselor Dallas.
Motion to move in camera.
Six ten. No one else? Please go ahead and vote. And that is unanimous. Once we get the indication from Mr. Conick, we will be in camera.